No attorney, Ruben? Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Forrester, my fellow commissioners, Tracy Alvarez, Acting City Manager, and Angela Torres, our City Clerk, I would like to welcome everyone here to today's meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 24, 2021. It is now 9:00 a.m. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Amanda Forrester?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Here.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a crime.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is silent meditation. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that each one of you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item number B4, the approval of the agenda. But before we do approve the agenda, I would like to make one correction, and that's on the back, J2, under threatened and pending litigation. And in parentheses, it has current and possible litigation. We need to remove "and" possible litigation.
Commissioner Forrester will make the motion.
Commissioner Baca will second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Forrester and a second by Commissioner Baca to approve the agenda with the correction as noted. All those in favor signify. Our Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item C, public comment. Again, remember, anyone that is wishing to give public comments, please identify yourself, name, and address, and remember our three-minute rule. We do have a timer that is set, so I will be interrupting you if you are over three minutes. I see Ron Stan. Do you have public comments this morning?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I've sent all of you commissioners a little information about procedural due process, which has been claimed to have been used in our recent appeals. However, because I don't know whether or not all of you have read this or understand it, I'm going to read it into the record. Due process flaws in the United States Constitution of various due process, here's why, in the Fifth Amendment and in the Fourteenth Amendment. Both amendments guarantee due process when someone is denied life, liberty, or property. Possible guaranteed procedures. Judge Henry Friendly, in this article entitled "Some Kind of Hearing," created a list of required procedures that due process requires. While the list is not mandatory, it remains highly influential, both in its content and relative priority to the item. Number one, an unbiased tribunal. Number two, notice to the proposed action and the grounds asserted for it. Three, opportunity to present reasons why the proposed action should not be taken. Four, the right to present evidence, including the right to call witnesses. Five, the right to go opposing evidence. Six, the right to cross-examine adverse witnesses. Seven, a decision based exclusively on the evidence presented. Eight, opportunity to be represented by counsel. Nine, requirement that the tribunal prepare a record of the evidence presented. Ten, requirement that the tribunal prepare written findings of facts and reasons for its precision. In light of today's item H2, I would like you all to remember that you have sworn oath to obey the Constitution of the United States of New Mexico and local laws, and in that regard, take into consideration what went on and transpired in the alleged appeals process that you held on the 27th of January, and take that very seriously into consideration because this may go much further than it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comments at this time out in the go-to meeting? Anyone else?
Ariel.
I see Ariel? Go ahead.
We can't hear you.
Would you, Ariel, you'll need to unmute your computer, please. Ms. Ariel, we cannot hear you.
Can you try, can you call on your cell phone and see if you can get through that way?
Ariel, can you get out of go-to meeting and then try to come back on? And I will go ahead and go to the next person that would like to give public comments, and then we'll catch you back if you can come back. If not, give us a call in, and you're more than welcome to be on public comments. Is there anybody else out in public? I have a caller number two that has their mic unmuted. Would you like to give public comments this morning? I see, also, I see a Susan Crowe. Would you like to give public comments this morning? Ms. Ariel, could, go ahead. Still can't hear you.
I think it's an audio issue on her side. Ariel, if you can call in on your phone, usually that was working the last time or the last few times that you called in.
Ariel, can you call us off of your cell phone, please?
I think she's doing that right now. It looks like she's trying to get the information to dial her, on her phone. Yeah, she is. Thank you, Ariel.
Thank you. Still can't hear you, Ms. Ariel.
Why don't you try calling her? That worked last time.
No, but they're not on my cell phone. Not on the, it's not on the, there she is, there she is. Caller three. Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, ma'am?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Turn this off. I get a terrible echo. I guess I'll just let me turn the sound down here. Okay. I also am objecting to H2 on the agenda. I think that you all, as a commission, need to look into and have a better process for appeals. I don't think the appeal a month ago was a very successful event. It didn't follow any rules. You made them up as things went on. I do really maintain that you violate my due process rights. I think that the list that Ron just read is a good beginning to try to understand better how an appeal process might work. I think the process was also very incomplete in the meeting a month ago, and H2 is an attempt to fix some of those problems, but it puts words in your mouth that never happened in that meeting. And I'm not sure how you all really can correct the problems from the January 27th meetings. This is an express, but I don't think it's a sufficient and good attempt, and it continues to violate my due process rights. And I hope that you all can find a better solution than this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ariel. At this time, is there anyone else out in public go-to meetings that would like to give public comments? If not, Tracy has a couple of emails that we have received that she will go ahead and read at this time.
Good morning. This one is from Rick Dumiac, 705 Charles Street. I have three items to comment on. First, I've been trying to get my smart electrical meter replaced since the city commission voted and passed a motion to allow opting out of the smart meters. I have been told there is no policy yet. The proposed monthly fee of $50 for a meter reading charge is outrageous, in my opinion. Before the meters were installed, meter readings was included in the monthly electrical fees. Why are we supposed to pay more now? What happened to the monies we were being charged to read the old meters? Why are we expected to pay more now? I have health issues and concerns that I wish to remain private and, under HIPAA regulations, do not need to be disclosed. By charging me or anyone else that wishes to opt out of having a smart meter due to a health reason or concern, you're putting a price tag on their health, and for our residents on fixed incomes, you're forcing them to decide on feeling safe in their own homes or having to perhaps give up $50 worth of food each month. My understanding is that a $50 amount was based on Sierra Electric Co-op's trip charge in three meters. I urge you to consider that the city of TRC is much smaller than the areas that Sierra Electric Cooperative services. To charge a resident of the city of TRC the same fee that Sierra Electric Cooperative charges for a trip charge is like comparing apples and oranges. They are not the same. Has in-depth cost analysis of the actual time it takes, it takes for a worker to travel to the furthest city limits and read a meter and return to the shop being completed? If not, how can a fair charge be established? Why can't the homeowner simply take a picture of their meter every month and send it into the city? Why can't the same person reading the water meter simply read both meters at the same time? Bottom line, the city is telling me that if I want to feel safe in my home from the smart meter concerns, that I and many others, we need to have to pay $50 a month for a meter reading. Perhaps $50 a year is more realistic and actual cost for meter reading by a city employee in an amount that would not create an undue hardship on any or elderly residents. The next item I want to comment again on is 630 Charles. At the last city commission meeting on February 10, 2021, the city manager stated that progress has been made and that substantial completion would be obtained by Monday, February 15, 2021. The city manager also stated the weeds and debris along the fence line have been removed. I urge the commissioners to drive by 630 Charles and look in the backyard and alley and tell me if you believe that is happening. Yes, I understand we had a snowstorm on Sunday, February 14, 2021, but again, this issue has been going on for years, and other residents on Charles continue to wait for closure. The last item I wish to comment on is the selection of a new city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Dumiac, for your email. We will make that part of our minutes.
Sophia Carone.
Sophia, go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
As you see on your screen, can you see the city yard there? Picture?
No.
You can see on your screen?
No, Sophia, we cannot.
There's no picture?
We can't see because we don't have internet at this time.
I know, but she, but she's trying to put a picture.
No, I don't see your picture at all.
It's very tiny down there.
Well, I'm sorry. I can see it. The city yard is right below my home, and it's about 500 feet from where children play, at Ralph Edwards Park, and it's about 500 feet from the Rio Grande River. And right now, a gentleman is washing off diesel into the ground right in front of me with a hose. You can all go there after the meeting and look. It's been going on for 20 years, and it's poisoning our town. They used to take the dirty street cleaning water and drain it right into the playground until milling the clouds stopped after the afternoon. Okay, we have 330 parcels of land in this town, and we just invested a quarter of a million dollars, excuse me, into Ralph Edwards Park. I have a proposal to use federal monies to clean up the city yard of Brownsville. It's a, it's a community project that could be done and paid for by the federal government. There's two beautiful buildings there that could be used for community recreation. There's a gorgeous portal there that's broken into pieces that could be restored and made to a farmer's market. The farmer's market people have shown interest. It's handicapped accessible, and it could be done for under a million bucks of our own money that we need to find, and maybe even way, way less than that. It would stop polluting, and it would make Ralph Edwards a really beautiful place, and would make our town healthier for the few children that are left here, since we've lost about 3,000 people. And I think it's a much more economical solution to recreation than the $12 million complex our former city manager was proposing. And I think you should all drive by, look at it, and let's get going on it. The original Ralph Edwards Park was built, the zeebo was built by a volunteer, the trees were volunteered. Let's make this a community project, not something some guy chooses an architect and takes it out of the community again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Tracy, go ahead.
Scott Lloyd, Turtleback Avenue. Dear Truth or Consequences community members, mayor, and commission, I and most of the landowners on the other side of the river from TRC are in support of a bridge, but not just for pedestrians, but also for automobiles and emergency police, fire, and rescue services. We have been annexed by the city for over 60 years, and the city has invested nothing on our side of the river in helping us develop our lands. A centerpiece bridge to drive across the Rio Grande down by the Hot Springs Art District and city parks would not only benefit the local community of TRC, but its counterpart on the other side of the river, the landowners who would like to further develop their lands. Just a walk bridge will only bring more people over in our area and subject already the dangers, but if somebody is hurt over there, it takes quite a long time for the emergency vehicles to get there and to get back when the river is flowing. The city of Truth or Consequences should look into the future, and a bridge for everyone would not only be inclusive, but more advantageous to both sides of the river and access for everyone. I believe both the BOR and the BLM should be supportive as stakeholders in the local community and the local land and the Rio Grande.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. At this time, is there any more public comments? Is there any more public comments from the go-to meeting? Mr. Eastfold, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Whitehead and members of the commission, and city clerk, and attorney Ruben. My name is Isaac Eastfold. I led the effort to create a unit of the National Parks Fund called Pettiglitz National Monument on the west side of Albuquerque. And that was created June 27, 1990. President George H.W. Bush gave me one of two pens to use to sign the bill. So I know a little something about areas of national strategy, and in being involved in the feeding waters trail issues and discovering this magnificent landscape that you have on your southern border, I can tell you, you have one such landscape that is of national significance. Starting at Williamsburg and coming east across the almost otherworldly alluvial pediments that come down to the river there, including major cultural sites, which I'm sure you can tell you about, and going up through the central flyway, one of the great flyways of the legendary birds coming down across the continent, the mud runs around Lutery Park, and the beautiful slopes of the Turtleback Mountains, paleontology, geology, you've got it all. It is a package worthy of national significance. I think you should take your planning carefully on that area, not sell it short for a couple of bridges and a couple of trails, but put it in the larger context of what your birth right is. You have a fantastic birthright of natural and cultural history. All it needs is to be put together and presented to invite people. So that would be my comment to you. And I think if you start doing those sorts of things, you can really prove the consequences in Williamsburg on the map in a very positive way and invigorate the tourism sector of our local economy beyond anyone's expectations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eastfold. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comments this morning? Anyone else? If not, we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is item D, response to public comments. At this time, do we have any response to public comments?
Attorney, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Aragon?
Yes, two quick things. Regarding Mr. Rick Dumiac's meter reader fee, you know, when we legislated this, I mentioned the fee, you need to start out with something, and we could work on, you know, making it less if necessary. Talking to George Zagetti, chairman of PUAD, they're working on that, and there's going to be some caucusing on reducing it. So that's going to happen eventually. Second thing, 630 Charles, I think that was moving along. We got something from the city manager after the meeting. Maybe our excellent, or any of the city manager, Tracy can give us an update on that.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Aragon, we have been working with the owner. I know that some may not see some progress, but there has been little progress, and it's just enough to kind of hold us at bay. However, their deadline after the last meeting with Manager Madrid?
Right.
Has now surpassed, and we will be proceeding forward as long as I can contract services to get in and do so. It's not an easy location to get quotes and to have somebody go in and clean, but I think I have that set in place now.
All right. Last, Mr. Eastfold, we all mentioned his last meeting. He's a guru on this, you know, environmental stuff, and I hope we're going to use his expertise. Obviously, he probably knows more about it than anybody in our county. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Are there any other public comments?
Tracy, do you advertise for those contracts, or is that somebody you reach out to?
I reach out to any contractor that I can get emails on. I think I have anywhere between seven to 10 emails that I have sent out for various baitment properties. I almost always get a response on one. Occasionally, I get responses on others who do not wish to quote on the item, and most of them are no responses. And those are all documented once I obtain a purchase order before we procure the services for somebody.
Okay, thank you. And Rick didn't get to finish, Mr. Dumiac didn't get to finish reading it, but the end of his public comment was talking about the interviewing process and him wanting us to reach out to the public for input during that process. And with all due respect, Mr. Dumiac, that is why we are elected here. We welcome any phone calls, emails, requests with input you may have, but as far as us going out into the public and holding all views extravagant events to hire a city manager, I personally don't think that that is necessary.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, is there any other responses to public comments this morning? Any other responses? Attorney Ruben, you don't have any response this morning?
No.
Thank you.
I will, when we get to H2, I will address some of the issues that the side of the committee made.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. The next item on our agenda this morning is item E, presentation. We have A1, Sierra County Regional Dispatch, SKRTA, Emergency Services Tower for Dispatch Radio System. We have Fire Chief Paul Thule, and we have Mickey Atwell here from SKRTA. Could I ask you both to step forward, please?
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
Oh, I've got it. Yay! Good morning. As everybody is aware, SKRTA is moving into the new Sierra County building that is being remodeled at this time. We'll be on the back end of the building. And with this move, of course, we're getting new equipment, which is extremely needed for SKRTA. Everything is outdated, past its life, and all of that. And the number one thing that I've been working with Tracy and all that, one of the first things that's going to go up is we are putting up a 100-foot public safety radio tower. And if you have any questions, I do have Mr. Dennis Hulink from Advanced Communications that is here, and that is the company that is going to be putting up the new radio tower. I provided, I gave to Tracy a radio study that was done a little over a year ago, which shows the mass improvement of radio communications we're about to have for all of our public safety responders in SKRTA when this new tower goes up. The tower is going to be placed behind the building, will be visible. It is 100 foot, you'll see 70 foot, at least 70 foot above the building. But if anybody has any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mickey. At this time, I do have one question. Why does it have to be moved from where it's at to behind the building at this time? Can you explain that?
Dennis, do you want to? Oh, he's ready.
Thank you. Thank you. That's just a question that we need answered, so everyone will know why.
Thank you for having me here today. The main reason is there's anchor bolts that go into the ground. Number one, we can't use those. And the way that the system is working right now, there's the water tank above the current SKRTA, and the tower that is behind there is actually owned by the county. It's not owned by the city. So, and as time has progressed, there's different revisions of construction requirements by the federal government for towers. The current tower that's up there, even if we were to try to take it down and move it, does not meet the new revisions of construction. So hence the new tower.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Do we have any further questions for SKRTA? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Our next item on the agenda this morning is item F, the consent calendar. We have F1, regular minutes of February 10, 2021. That's the only item on the agenda on the consent calendar this morning.
Commissioner Forrester makes the motion as noted. Commissioner Luna, second.
I have a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Luna. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Francis Luna?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Yes.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Yes.
Honorable Amanda Forrester?
Yes.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item G, ordinances, resolutions, and zoning. G1, discussion action, resolution number 35, 2021, budget adjustment request. Carol Patrick, Finance Director.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Do you mind if I sit here or do you need me to move?
You should be fine now.
Okay. I've given you each, and you got in your packet, the budget adjustments that we submit to the Department of Finance. I want to try and make it as simple for you as possible, so with each budget adjustment, I've attached documents for you to look at. Most of these, when we first did budget, we were working with a new charter of accounts, trying to get items in a capital line item. We double-budgeted in the municipal street fund, $30,000, so we wanted to remove that from that line item. On the second document- On the second document, again, we wanted to budget that into a line item in which we had a cash balance, which is the street fund. If you have any other questions on these budget adjustments, I'd be glad to answer them for you. Most of them are just correction line items. We have a couple of grants in there, $50,000 each, one for the sewer. The other one is for the PG 5240 grant, the Riverwalk feasibility study. Again, most of these items are just corrections of where we budgeted to start with, or to increase budget, excuse me, for loan funds that we've received to go on with future projects. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. Are there any questions from the Commission this morning?
No questions. May I make one comment? I thank you very much for the farthest column to the right. You're very, very nice.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to you to approve the Resolution 352021 for the budget adjustments.
I'll second that. I have a motion made by Commissioner Luna and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Forster to approve Resolution number 352021, budget adjustment request, as noted by Carol Kilpatrick, our Finance Director. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item this morning is Item H, under new business, H1, discussion action, request and extension of the National Park Service Technical Assistance Grant for the Sierra County Rio Grande Trail Project. Mary Jo Fall, Horonata Resource Conservation and Development Council. Mary Jo, you're up.
Okay. So I have more papers. Can I use this? Sit down and do it. While she's doing that, when I put your packet together, I didn't know what I was going to say, so I didn't do it. So that's really what we're going to talk about today, and I have a copy for you to check.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. I'm never really prepared. So first of all, thank you for letting me be here today. I wanted to give you guys an update and kind of let you know what is going on. It kind of ties in to what Mr. Eastfold was talking about earlier, too. So since we have a new Commissioner, and just to kind of refresh with everybody what we're going to be talking about, the first thing in your packet, though, is the map. The map that we, I see in the original packet was incorrect. It had a notation on there about, we believe, were archaeological sites. I don't know where those sites are. That was just something we had been discussing, and it unfortunately been noted on the map. And so we took that off. And so this is a map that we're kind of building our project off of. And it's a pretty lengthy map, because it goes all the way actually down to Seco Canyon. So that's why it's three pages now instead of the other one. So that's for reference for what we're going to talk about today. I hope I don't have a time limit. So just to kind of review about what happened and where we're at, so this process actually began back in winter of 2018, when a resident of a community that's an avid runner approached me. He had heard that the RCMD maybe could help them. He is an avid runner and wants to get across the other side of the river, and of course, when the river's up, he can't do that. And so he said, well, there's something we can do to get like a footbridge, so that would make it easier. And so when I talked to him, I said, well, that's a good idea, but we need this to be a community project, and maybe a bigger scope than just one bridge. We can't get a lot of support in the community or for funding sources if it's just one thing. So we initially reached out to a group of different types of stakeholders to see what they thought, and the first thing we did was contact the city, the village of Williamsburg, the Tourism Board, folks like that. And so we started meeting and came up with kind of a conceptual idea in how we could perhaps put this together. And then we went to the city and asked them, and the village also, to see if one of the city or the village would like to apply to the National Park Service has a Recreation, Trails, and Conservation Program. And the city had availed themselves of that program in the past when we did the Heating Waters Trail Plan. And so that's how that thought came to us. So we came to both entities. We felt since the initial conversation had been with a resident within the city limits, that the city would be the natural applicant. And so we worked with the city manager and the city commission, and you approved the application to the National Park Service. Now, this program is free, totally free, and it's really just for technical services. So it's like a planner. So you have a free planner that's helping in this process. And when it was approved, then the original steering committee began meeting again and trying to develop what we're going to do. And when we started, the original five or six people, when we first met with Attila Vality, he's been on the visit with you guys in the past, we thought we should expand our base of the steering committee, because the steering committee was like the people that would kind of lead this process through, and then when they get done, then we present this to the city and to the village. So as I said, we had the city and the, excuse me, the city and the village, we had Main Street, TRC, the Tourism Board, the City Bell from Butte was a part of it originally, and still sort of through Kim Skinner, the Sierra Vista Hospital. We have a river outfit group, a marketing professional, someone from the Wildlife Federation, Sierra County, Sierra Soil and Water Conservation District, Representative Rebecca Dow, 4H and Extension, the Sierra County Health Council, the Bureau Reclamation, ROTC, and the Cross Country Coach, and then also local law enforcement, because we really wanted to get, everybody comes to this with a different kind of perspective, and we wanted to make sure that we captured all that. And like the cross-country kids, we asked them, because maybe they, and he actually approached us and said he would like to, he was interested, because maybe he could get the kids training over there. That was when it was Coach Baca. So this started, we submitted the proposal in 2019, so it's coming on two years. When we first, the main thing we wanted to do, and the main thing that the National Park Service focuses on is community outreach. And so we started going to some local events. We had a display board we had put up, and then the COVID restrictions happened, so we couldn't do that anymore. But we still wanted to get some good community outreach. And so in the next pages past your map, then this is a sample of what we had done. This is a flyer, and then we had similar postcards like this that we tried to distribute throughout the community with. This was when the restrictions were the most stringent, and so banks were closed, a lot of people were closed, but the city, and they might be out now, but we took postcards to, and these flyers around, and to businesses, so that people could generate those conversations, and then it has contact information on the back. The National Park Service, using their funds, then they purchased these, so the next page, these are community boards, and so they're kind of like bulletin boards that we solicit more comments from the public. One is set up at Rotary Park, and then one is in front of the post office at the village of Williamsburg. And so we came up with different questions, and we're still doing that, about, you know, trying to just start that conversation on their interest, or what should we call it? How do you think, what do you think about getting in and out of the river? How do you think it'll affect wildlife? What do you think about maintenance? All kinds of questions. Now, and we've been lucky that we got the club kids and also the ACT kids, the ACT, it's a club downtown that Destiny Mitchell does, and so they would gather the information. They went down there once a week and took a picture of the board, and so we're keeping a data collection of all of those questions. And it's actually, when you read what people have said, most times, we haven't had a lot of vandalism or derogatory comments, so I thought that was a really positive thing that we've got going with outreach. And we continue to do that, because as this is a community project, it's not just like this group's project. So after the steering committee, we kind of lined up some of these things, and they said, well, it's time to really get down to the nitty-gritty, because what this process will be when we're done and come back to the city and the village, it will be a thorough plan about the feasibility, the pros and cons, footbridges across the river, we wanted to, for the runners, but also, well, what about the people that we have, like we have a river trip? So how do you get in and get out? What are the best ways to do that? What are the obstacles? How can we improve it? And then also the naturalness of the river corridor itself, because we have a lot of salt cedar in there. We have some erosion going on. How do we enhance that? So we wanted them, some groups to really focus on that. So then we created some working groups. And so we have a river group, a trail group, and an education group. And in your handout then is kind of what they were charged with doing. So the River Access Group, what they're supposed to be doing, the Trails Group, and the Conservation Group. And they've been meeting pretty regularly. I have to say that I'm leading the Conservation Group, and the other groups are beating my butt, because they are doing so much work. The river group, that's being led by, in that group are people that are on the float all the time, and so they're aware of it, and they've already developed desired conditions, what it's like, what are the obstacles. They've reached out to Neil Brown, to how we can partner with them. They're really doing a fantastic job. The Trail Group is led by one of the guy that initially started this process, and then they're all runners. I'm definitely not on that group. And so what they're looking at is, once we get on the other side, this is all about activity on the other side of the river, and what a good trail process is, people already have been doing it for a long time, what are problems with that, and defining some of the problems in the future if we really get a good trail system going. And then the Conservation Education Group, as I said, you know, we have issues with restoration. When Sierra Soil got money to remove all the salt cedar, we did try and do pole plantings of variety of different methods to restore the native veggies, and we had 10% success. Because of the fluctuation of the river, we've used pole plantings, we've used all different methods, we didn't have a lot of luck. So that will be something we're going to have to try and line out in the plan. And we also wanted to, another part of that component, that group, is to look on education and how we can get the youth involved, and how, you know, this needs to be a community project. And so if the youth have ownership, and all of us do, then the maintenance issues of it won't be as much of a problem. And so how do we do that? Do we do a River Day? How do we set up kiosks and perfected panels, those kinds of things? And so all of these groups then will come back to the steering committee, and then based on what the groups have come up with, Attila will help us write an overall plan, a big picture of what we're going to be doing, and what we hope to achieve. And then they will present that plan to the city and to the village, and if you approve that plan, then we can start looking at getting money. So it's kind of, you know, you have to have that all in place. And when they're looking on the map, like the river group, they apparently, they, when you, they kayak all the way down to Seco Creek. I'm like, they're nuts. That's a whole day thing. But I didn't know anybody even did that. Now, when Mr. Eastfold was talking about the larger landscape, so on your maps, the blue, that's the river, the green and the yellow that's right by, you know, from the three miles, it's basically three miles from Rotary Park down to the village of Williamsburg. And so that would be the primary trail. And the purple are already roads that have been developed and are being used, and so are the, he didn't tell me what the blue was. Attila, he created this map. Now, when we're talking about larger landscape, like right across from Rotary Park and Ralph Edwards Park, that's all private land, as that private, the guy in the comments said. If you want to develop something, the city can, you should think about acquiring some type of easement. If we're going to go right across, like it's say Rotary Park, because that's kind of where this all started, right across there, that's owned by the Shepherd Group. Now, we've been talking to them, and they're amenable to working with us. The first thing we thought about doing, well, we need to get over to that county road, because that's certainly an easy place to start running, it's already developed. So there are easements that maybe the city could acquire, so you could have people to get over there. There's certain enhancements that you can provide to the landowner to encourage him to do that, but he's pretty amenable to that. We've also talked to him about an easement right along the river's edge, so it would be a nicer view, and then you could connect to Ralph Edwards and then come all the way down. So those are things that we'll line out in the plan. But once you get over to the county road, people have the misperception that that's all public land over there, once you get over there. Well, it's not. And so signage for everybody would be very paramount, that we notice where there's private land and where it's not. So after you get past the low water crossing, that's pretty much Bureau Reclamation and BLM land, so won't have as many issues with trespassing. But we need to, of course, look at signage. And if you, after you get there, when you think about all of this area, like Mr. Eastfold said, there's all kinds of places. We have been reaching out to the Bureau Reclamation, of course, working closely with them, but also the Bureau Land Management, because they're charged with most of the management of that public land. And if we want to grow this to a bigger scale and have more public and more tourism, more people come in, then we need them to start working on developing, doing their NEPA process so that they can get those trails designated. Now, the BLM has been working since 2005 on their tri-county management plan. They started, and then they lose staff, and then they stop going forward, and so they're starting again. This would need to be part of that plan. Now, it's been, how many years that's been? 15 years. They still haven't gotten written. But they would need to start that NEPA process. So we're going to, we need to start that conversation with them, but when we do, we need this plan in place and say, okay, this is what our group has thought, these would be good trails, so that then they can focus their energies on places we've gotten the support for trails, rather than them coming up with their own plan. But it will be something down the road that the city probably really needs to help support, and the county, I think all of us together, that we can approach them, and it'll certainly work out well for us. But just getting them up to speed and start working on it, that will take several years, but down the road, it will be a benefit. And then I just wanted to talk about, you were talking about the Wilson and Company, oh gosh, yeah, wrote a whole kind of, a lot of stuff I was going to talk about, and I didn't read my script, so quite a surprise. So another thing in your packet, because I think there's some confusing with everybody about what we're doing versus what Wilson and Company is doing. And so this little paper here, this details the differences and what the deliverables are, so that everybody is aware of what we're working on, and we're really not working in tandem. Their goals and their deliverables are a little bit connected to ours, but they're really more into marketing and for infrastructure needs. So, you know, they're looking at, from what I've read in the scope of work and in the contract, you know, your planning grant is looking at something like, it would be if your dream was perfect, and it could be like the San Antonio Riverwalk. I mean, you have to think about what that is going to buy you versus this is what's going to buy you. We would hope, one thing that we do need that would be helpful in our plan is the placement of the footbridges. So the preliminary ideas, and again, these aren't just footbridges, they won't be for ATV use, and so emergency response would still be an issue, how we're going to address that, and we'll write something about that. That's why we haven't communicated with law enforcement, any MS, since we first started, but we will again. But if you look at the placement of the bridges, what we're kind of thinking is maybe one at Ralph Edwards, one at Rotary Park, in the Williamsburg, where that channel right behind the Fair Barn, or inlets into the river, they own about an acre of land there for that outlet, and people walk in that area of Williamsburg a lot, and so we, maybe one there, and then one by the bend. So those four areas are what we've been talking about, but are they suitable for bridges? I mean, I don't know what the footings would be like.
I have a question real quick. So you're talking
So you're talking about putting four foot bridges in? What is the purpose in four instead of just having maybe one at Ralph Edwards and then one in, in Williamsburg?
That's what I had thought at first, but the, the Trail Group, they think that they would get more use. I mean, if you're going to do this and we want it, then go big.
Right.
So we would have more activity. And, and if people, and maybe they want to do a short walk, so they're at Ralph Edwards with their kids, so you cross over and you go down, go to Rotary, that's just a very small loop. So that would be good for that. Now, Williamsburg, they, they just, they asked to have two. That's what they preferred. So that's kind, and the Trail people, that's kind of what they're looking at. But it just kind of shows what we're going to be doing versus the Wilson. And I, I, we really could use their help if that, and I don't know what you can do with their scope of work, but if they could give us some guidance on the type of bridges and, and the footings, like the soils are the suitable, you know, can we, you know, and we know that when we do these bridges, that we're going to have to work with the Corps of Engineers because they'll have to get in, you're putting something in the water, so you'll have to get a permit. We've been working with the Bureau of Reclamation, and so as long as what we're thinking of a bridge doesn't impede their 5,000 CFS, then they're good with that. And so working with them isn't going to be an obstacle, but it's, you know, like what kind of bridge and what kind of weight load bearing, just some simple engineering tactics would help us.
How can we help facilitate that meeting or set up with Wilson and Company? Is that something that we could set up?
I do have, Wilson and Company have called into the meeting to answer any questions on that both Mario and Paige, if you'd like them to speak at all, they're more than willing to.
Well, I would hope, this is what I would like, is perhaps if, if Tracy and the engineers for, because I don't really, I under, I read the grant, but I didn't read the contract you have with them, but the scope of work doesn't include this kind of engineering. So you'd have to modify your scope of work to ask them to do that. And whether you, you guys will have to discuss, I know they have the skills, they have the ability to do that. It would really just be some direction from the Commission to see if you could modify it within, operating within your same, same funding amount. So that's what you guys, after you talk to them, and maybe if their engineer can talk to Attila, because he knows exactly what we're looking for, then they would know what we're looking for, and then you guys could negotiate that change. That would really be an asset to this planning grant, because then it just ties this all together.
So, so Mary Jo, Mayor Whitehead here. We would just have to get with Wilson and Company as to the plans for this group and see how we could modify and get them to help us.
Right.
That it wouldn't cut into whatever else that they're doing.
Right, it shouldn't. I, I hope it wouldn't take too much of their time, but I, I'm not an engineer. And I know that they have a Steering Committee, and most, a lot of the members of the Wilson and Company Steering Committee, we're all the same group, but they're not going to step outside the box unless you give them that permission. So they're, if you could have a conversation with them about what they could do and how that would affect the scope of work, I know that would really be a win-win for all, for the community more so than our group.
Tracy, is that something that we could set up, a meeting with Wilson and Company or a representative and, and visit with, with this group and visit with the Commission? Amanda sits on this committee as well as I do and, and you, and just kind of get everything, just kind of get a planning, a planning idea of what needs to be done and how we can go about it that's going to be.
It would be a big help, yeah. And they, then they could tell us, well, that'll, that'll be easy, or that's going to take so much time, so then that's going to affect, we don't want it to be a detriment to what they're doing, but while they're here, this would really help, this really connect together.
That would be a good communication and connection and make sure we're working together.
Yeah, it would really be a big help.
Tracy?
Mayor, Commissioners, if it's okay, I would like to give Mario just a, a quick opportunity to, so I can ensure that we don't violate anything that's within our scope of work or, or our grant agreement within MSA on the planning grant. Mario, are you available to speak briefly on that?
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Commissioner members, well, we would typically, there's honestly a sort of a broad range of how we can address the issue or the question at hand. Our recommendation is that we put together some bullet points for Attila, we have been communicating with him, and, and send, send him what our thoughts and recommendations of what she's looking for are, and have him vet it and confirm and or modify. It definitely will be outside of the MSA planning grant scope of work. The MSA planning grant scope of work is focused on an economic development premises. That's how it was written, that's how it was submitted. So the focus is on land use and supporting infrastructure to promote that type of land use that would attract market gap industry in the area. So for, for example, Rotary Recreational is one of those elements, and some of the work that Joquan and her team are doing. But the Trails is very, very important and integral to, to that plan. But the question about the bridge, that, that's not part of the economic development scope that's seen in the planning grant. So, so allow us to put together some notes and over to Attila. And at a minimum, we're going to recommend to do a few doors, check the foundation, do a preliminary planning call for spans and heights of, of headbreaks that Joquan's teaching to, that can be integrated in their final deliverable for, for their project. If, if the Commission is in there, if you're good with that, we'll proceed in that direction.
Thank you, Mario. I appreciate that.
I'd be much appreciated by our group too, Mario. Thank you.
And it's much appreciated by the Trails Group.
Madam Mayor, the item on the agenda is request an extension for the grant.
Right, that's the next, that's, that's the last thing.
We're not there yet?
No, you know, I, not to talk. What do you, what do you think, Aggressive?
I, I thought we were there.
So we're there now. So now that we're kind of, so, so kind of, so you know what we've been doing and where we're going. So this, the proposal you submitted was for two years assistance, and so that time is about up. And so I sent a template, and that's the last thing in the packet, is, you don't have to use that wording, but that would, that would work, and I have the correct name and address that you send it to if you approve that. So I'm asking the city, you initiated the proposal to you write an extension. I am going to go to the village, so they'll send one also, but if you could approve that, that would be great, and we can finish our plan.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
You're piggybacking on Commissioner Luna. I really, please, kind of clarify what, why we need to do an extension and what we need to do.
Because we're not done yet.
That's what I'm, I'm questioning.
So it, the purpose was to write a, a completed plan, and we're not done yet.
So we, we have to approve an extension?
You have to write a letter, ask for the National Park Service if they will extend the cer, the technical services for this program.
And you need a, like a resolution from us?
Because, yeah, well, a letter is all. But you sent the proposal in.
Okay.
So it, it came from the city, so the city needs to ask for that extension.
Could I answer another question, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, that answers my question there. Number two, you are collaborating with Mr. Eastfold, I presume, right?
He's part of the Conservation.
Okay, good. Third thing is the, the footbridge, I know there's a lot of talk about that, how many and so forth. I'm a runner and I, I would drive down there to go across the river. Is there some kind of conflict on not having a footbridge or the environmental purpose that we can't do that or something, or is it?
Not that we've been aware of during our conversations.
No one's against that?
No, no.
Okay, that's, that's all I.
All the community outreach we've gotten, none of them have been against that. And our conversations with Bureau of Reclamation, they're not against it. We have talked intermittently with the recreational staff at the BLM, but they're not against it. So, so far, we haven't had any opposition. It'll just be, where's the best place to put them that doesn't impact the flow of water, you know, meet those things.
It's going to be something substantial, it's going to be like a rope, you know, like in the jungle or something like that.
I don't know. I picture it like those similar bridges that the Forest Service uses, just some wood bridge, because it's not going to be wide for, it's just going to be for bicycles and pedestrians, so.
Okay, good.
It's going to be a monstrosity.
Right now. I'm not talking now. No, I have a question, I don't want you to be.
Oh, yes.
Oh, Mary Jo, will we, are we putting ourselves in danger of losing any funding? Is there more funding available because it's taking longer?
Oh, no, that, it usually takes longer.
Okay, all right.
And because of COVID, then it, you know.
We have everything on COVID.
Right. Well, we couldn't have, one of the main things that the National Park Service focuses on is community outreach, and we weren't able to really acquire what we needed and have our groups meet.
Right.
So I would say we'll probably be done this fall, though we'll have a document finished.
And, and I just want to make a comment that this agreement that we entered into was just allowing the city to be part of, of this group, and that we're giving our blessings to. It's not costing us anything at this time. And so it's just a study about putting the foot bridges, about getting across the river, about, you know, kind of what we can do with our trails and, and, you know, biking, hiking, horseback riding, whatever needs to be done to keep our community active. So that's all this agreement is, and again, it's, it's running out, so we just need to extend it, letting them know that we are, as a city of truth or consequences, still wish to participate and be a part of this.
Right.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Luna will make a motion. We approve the request for the extension for the National Park Service Technical Assistance Grant for the Rio Dam Project, and ask our Acting City Manager, Jay, and the mayor to work with Mary Jo to get that off.
Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Luna and seconded by Commissioner Aragon for the approval of the request for extension to the National Park Services as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll.
Honorable Paul Boffas?
Aye.
Honorable Nanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Oh, thank you, guys, and I'll give the correct name and address to you, Angela. I got it from Attila yesterday, so that, that'll who you'll have to address it to. And as I said, that's just a template, you can write whatever you want.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Put the chairs down.
All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is item H2 under New Business Discussion Action Order on Section 1430E Appeals. I'll turn this now over to our city attorney, Jay Rubin.
Good morning, everyone. We had our meeting last, you know, earlier this month. I suggested we should put together an order that would set forth what your decision was back of the January 27, 2021 meeting. And I have two reasons for doing that. Number one is because in case this case does wind up, and you just report, if there's an appeal, we would be required to have an order. Your, your rules of court require that you have something in place when the administrative body, that's what, you know, that's what I mean, motivation here. But not only that, it was also some discussion there made with other applications of your ruling for future uses, so I thought it's also appropriate to have an order anyway. So that's, that's what the motivation was. Anyway, so it's the documented order on 14-30 E Appeals, 14-30 E, for the ordinance that was a plague here. I've got five findings here. The first three are basically just the procedural history of how the case wound up in front of the Commission, plus about how the, what the city manager did, what the Electrical Department Director and I did, et cetera. Paragraphs four and five, I think, are important because it responds to the comments that we heard today during public comment. Paragraph four, the appellate will permit to supplement your appeals with supporting documents. So what, what that means was, was that after the, after the administration had to deny the initial request on December 31, 2020, the appellate were given opportunity to, to provide to you anything basically wanted. If you remember, the package you had, January 27 meeting, had very extensive materials in there, and there was no restrictions in place on anybody, it's really what they could submit to you. They, they had full opportunity to supply any information they felt was important for you to understand your appeal. And you went a step further than that. You know, you, you really almost could have actually decided to appeal based upon the written information you were given, but you went a step further and gave everybody a chance to give a five-minute presentation to supplement your appeals. So as we get down now to the bottom part of my order, paragraph, the appellate will all grant due process having your appeals considered. And for the reasons I've given, I feel very comfortable in my opinion that, that you did that. So I, please, you know, if you ever make that statement, and actually quite often, I was proud of the Commission that we, we went that far, so that, that was good. Paragraph B reads, "The city administration's decision to deny the appellate's respective appeal is appealed, subject to modification described in paragraph C." Now, this is something I had to grapple with a little bit, because when we actually had the hearing on January 27, we didn't actually use the word grant the appeal or deny the appeal. But if you remember what the actual POs sought to do, they wanted, the appellate did not want to have this smart meter installed, they wanted to keep your old meter, and they didn't want to pay for it.
Right.
And we did not agree to that, you know? We, we, we said, no, if you're, if you want to keep your, your old meter, you're going to have to pay this additional fee. So based upon that, I would consider that legally to be a denial of, of what the appeal sought to do. And I think actually fair to have something like that, anybody case there is an appeal, it's clearest of what the decision is. But however, that's where you get to paragraph C, and that's where we have the additional language, that any appellate's opt not to have smart meters installed, any appellate can retain their old meter by paying additional fee of $50 per month. This fee would cover the city's expenses, including the cost of the smart, excuse me, including the cost of the meter reader manually reading the meters. And I took that from the midst of the last meeting. Commissioner Aragon, I know you made a comment earlier about the PUA being maybe considering something less, that's, well, I'm good, but I still prefer that this order keeps the $50 charge in place, but that, that was a rule that the Commission had on January 27. It's certainly acceptable if the PUA wants to deliberate this and send this back up to you and make a recommendation, you certainly can consider something later on. If you decide to change that fee, you can always do amendments. But I wouldn't just reflect what we actually agreed upon at the January 27 meeting. And finally, paragraph D reads, "If any other citizen desires to opt out of having a smart meter installed on their property, they must notify Electoral Department Manager and City Manager within a reasonable time pursuant to city ordinance 14-30E. A reasonable time depends on the fact and circumstances of each particular case." Okay, the word reasonable time, I took that word right from the origin, so that's where that comes from. Each situation may be different. I, I want to make sure we had something in place here, because I'm concerned about having an open-ended process without really, without really some language here that we, that we would have to consider. I'm not really an expert in really how to source a smart meters, as I understand it, I think once a, a smart meter is installed, I think the, you know, after a period of time, the old meters are disposed of, so I mean, in those situations, it would not be reasonable trying to come back a year later, five years later and saying, I want my old meter back. So that's why it's in there. So anyway, that's my work. If you're inclined to approve this, what I need to do, I need to put a date on here, because that way we'll know that date and why you agreed to this, and that way it's a thirty-day period for an appeal to district court, so I, I need to put a date on this. And I also have to add the language in paragraph B, I need to make that fluorescent denied the appellate, opposed to the, asked respective appeal, it should be appellate with a, with a possibility. So.
Madam Clerk? Thank you. Is there any questions?
I do have a question. Um, of Mr. Eastfold. When we were having that conversation, it wasn't just actually the, the manual reading of those meters, but now, what is the process, how does the process differ from those who select to keep the old style meter and getting that data entered into the billing process versus those that have the smart meter? What's the difference in those processes? Because my thought was that we would have to take that, that paper from their reading and go and enter it into the books of those, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Morning, Mayor, Mayor Prothee, fellow commissioners. So when, when the utility office needs to build that cycle, what they have to do, they have to download the meters into the handheld and meter, give it to the, the meter reader, he will have to go out and read that meter, put the reading into the handheld, then go back to the utility office, plug it into the computer and download it into the computer, and then, then it is processed into the computer as a reading.
Okay, so there is an actual process? It's not, we take a picture of our meter and we're done and?
No, there is a process.
All right. Because that was my thing, it's not, I mean, it's easy to say, yeah, the guy just spends two seconds at my meter and he reads my meter, but there's a follow-up process to that. Some, that information doesn't just magically appear on my bill now. So my thought was, in that $50 opt-out fee, was that includes that entire process, because it is special handling of that person's, their utility, their bill, the whole concept. It's not just the trip charge, it's, it's more than just that. Thank you. That's reasonable.
Also, I'd like to make, thank you, Commissioner Luna, I'd like to make a comment. Even though we go out there and we manually read them, if for some reason those individuals have a problem, then we have to go back out and reread them. So, so again, you know, that's, that's again another process that we have to follow and we have to know that these guys have to go out there and do that. So, thank you. Commissioner, may I approach him?
Jay, I just want to say thank you for putting this together and keeping us on the straight and narrow and actually putting into a document what we tried to get across last time, is that yes, we are denying their request, but we are giving an option if that one is changed, so thank you for that.
You're welcome, Commissioner, yes. And actually, it was a pleasure working with Commissioner on this, because I really feel strongly, it was really helpful to keep we're following due process. I mean, so I think it's a well-thought-out process the way the Commissioner approached. So, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin.
Madam Mayor, should we add the remainder of that concept to the last of paragraph C, including the cost of meter reading, manual reading, the meters, data entry, or special billing, handling, some kind of wording along that line?
Reread.
Reread, et cetera? Because it's not just the reading of the meters.
Right.
I mean, we're not, would that be appropriate?
Um, I don't see a problem with that.
It's just mine.
Yeah.
We seem to get in on every little thing these days, and I mean, I thought, you know, by definition, due process is fair treatment through the normal judicial process, especially as citizens entitled. I felt you laid that out completely accurate. We had ninety pages of documents. We read them, we heard their comments. We listened, and we came up with an option that gave them an alternative, and I thought that they would have been happy with. And I'm, I'm very frustrated personally that we gave them the option. We didn't say, no, like it or not, take it or leave it, be done, move out. We gave them the option to help them, and we're still getting beat up about it, and it really irritates me head and shoulders.
So help me with that language, Commissioner Luna, okay? We have including the cost of the meter reader manually reading the meters, and then it'll say and, and then also do you want me to add?
And any process?
And subsequent billing process?
And procedures?
Subsequent billing process.
Process and procedures.
We can clarify too, with the utility office.
I just wanted to, I want them to understand, so if we do, heaven forbid, get to a district judge, they're not like, it's not going to cost you fifty dollars for that, there's more to it than that. Anyone with common sense would understand that.
All right. Also, I did also change the pluralized language in paragraph B to, all right?
Just saying.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. So I will make a motion, we approve the order on section fourteen thirty as discussed.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Luna and two seconds, one by Commissioner Baca and Mayor Protem Forster, to approve the order on section fourteen dash thirty E Appeals, which is noted by and fixed by Attorney Jay Rubin. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning are reports. At this time, City Manager, do we have reports?
Good morning, I do have a couple of things to report. The first thing I'd like to discuss is an update regarding the current water leak. Our water crew was on site until two AM this morning, working on the South Broadway leak. Some residents within this area could possibly be without water or experience some low flows this morning, and they'll be focusing their efforts on excavating the sites that are needed to be opened up at the Cook and Height Street area for installation of a flow stop to deal with that hydrant leak that they're having. Once that's completed, they're going to jump back over to the South Broadway area and recommence working on that leak, and we just ask everybody to be patient. We'll continue to update PSA announcements. If anybody has any questions, they can give us a call, and we'll do our best. I'd also like to invite the commission to attend our next Airport Advisory Board meeting. It's on March second at four PM. I'll have City Coras put out a potential forum for either, I'd like to see you guys in attendance, but if nothing else, to be able to call in. We do have a new airport management coming in, and I think that you guys would really like some of his future short-term, long-term goals that he has for the airport. I think it's going to be a real positive boost out there. I also have Bo, I'd like him to give a quick update regarding the power outages that we have, if he could, and then I'll move on to my next two after-bow updates.
Morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Mayor Protem, fellow commissioners. So I wanted to go over the power outage we had on February fourteenth. At approximately seven thirty-five AM, the city of the consequence department received a call from dispatch alerting us of a power outage at the stoplights located at certain date in District Dispatch Office. Thank you, ma'am. An additional call was then received approximately ten minutes later in regards to sparks and smoke from the electric department substation. Upon arriving at the substation, we two noticed sparks coming from the south transformer high-side fuse. We proceeded to turn off the substation's south transformer and began transferring all the south transformer load to the north transformer. When this was completed, we still could not turn on two circuits, our downtown circuit and our Cedar Circuit. While patrolling the downtown and Cedar Circuits, we could not find out, find anything in the lines that would affect the two circuits from coming back on. At this time, we did make a decision to isolate Cedar Circuit. We proceeded by cutting the jumpers behind the bowling alley to see if the problem was from the bowling alley north or from the bowling alley south to the substation. While doing this, we found the problem was coming from the bowling alley south to the substation. We did go out and patrol again. We did find a battered rustor and insulator on one of our poles, both of which were replaced. Also on Forest Street, we found two-three-phase lines that had slapped together due to the wind, and they had welded themselves together. So every time we turned on the circuit, we were seeing the direct short phase to phase, so we did get these lines separated, and we did tighten up to one line so this problem would not occur again. We did get power restored around ten, ten, ten PM. We stayed and took care of some trouble calls dispatch, generator wasn't working properly and everything. And then we did come back in at three, three-thirty that afternoon and got the south transformer repaired and back online, so we had both transformers working. So at this time, any questions from you guys?
I don't have any questions. Does any of the other commissioners have questions? But I am going to cut in because I do have certificates of appreciation for, and I want to thank our community, but I'm going to go ahead and read, I have four certificates of appreciation, and I'm going to read them right now. Certificate of appreciation presented to Bo Easley, Kenny Moran, Christopher Reese, and our City Manager Morris Madrid. It says, "With our sincerest appreciation and recognition of your involvement and tireless efforts to help restore power to our citizens during the Arctic Blast power outage that took place on February fourteenth, which was Valentine's Day, 2021, we want to commend you and make sure you know your actions do not go unnoticed." Date is the twenty-fourth of February, 2021, signed by myself and Angela. And we appreciate all you all do. Every time you get out there, whether it be in the midst of the cold, and of course, that was an Arctic Blast, I think that was the coldest we've had in many years. I also, on top of that, want to thank our Chief of Police, Mike Apodaca, our DC, Erica Baker, I know they hit the ground running and were out there, as well as all our other officers that were on duty that day. Also, a big thank you to Mickey Atwell at Skerta, Bruce Swingle, our County Manager. I know that between him and Morris, we could not get the Civic Center open because we did not have electric there to warm the people up, so Manager Madrid got in touch with Bruce Swingle, and they were able to open the Albert Lyons Center. I would also like to thank Paul Tulley, everyone that was out there on the streets that day, they were tough streets. I was out there and I got in trouble, so I got called and said, get back home, you have no business being on the street. So that's where I went. But again, I would like to thank each and every one of you, so if I could get you to come up and get your certificates, please? And I think, I think, oh, let me go get one. Sorry about that. And I think that's a good gesture every time. You know, we have a lot of negativity around here, but we need some positive also. Our city were in, right? Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Paul, you had a question?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And thank you for all the updates that you guys continue to put out there, and now go back to work.
Just thank you guys very much for everything you did do, appreciate it.
Especially on Valentine's Day and on Sunday when it was cold.
That's all right, guys, thank you.
Can I see my next report? If I could have Keith up about that? I believe he's just going to give a report regarding a pursuit, and just kind of update the commission.
Good morning. Last Wednesday, I got a call from Detective Lanford informing me that US Marshals were in town. They had an individual residing in Tiersey that was wanted for kidnapping out of Las Cruces. He has a history of assaulting police officers, fighting with police officers, carrying firearms. So they brought their tactical team because it was considered a high-risk search warrant. I told Detective Lanford, keep me informed, I was at home relaxing, and at about nine-thirty, nine-forty-five, I get a call from dispatch that our officers are involved in a pursuit. Well-being that, you know, pursuits are one of the most dangerous things police officers do, and liability all around, I jumped in my clothes and got in my unit, got onto Date Street, and found out that the pursuit was northbound on I-25 at about the checkpoint. I ended up catching the pursuit at the county line. Not that I have a super-fast unit, but the pursuit was only running seventy-five, eighty, I think ninety was the top speed. We followed the vehicle with, I'm assuming, half a dozen, eight units between our units and the marshal's office. I was in contact with Lieutenant Venable, who was part of the operation, and he said that he had the two units that were to protect the city involved, so I canceled them immediately. I passed them at the eighty-nine mile marker. We proceeded all the way to the one-twenty-eight, and the suspect vehicle ran out of fuel. We did a felony extraction, we arrested the individual that we were looking for, and there was a female and two children in the vehicle. And how this pursuit transpired, I'll let my lieutenant, who was on scene, explain that part of it.
Okay, so we got the calls from the marshals, we all met up at the station, did our briefing. From there, we went to the target house, we set up surveillance, we, okay, it was going to be at seven oh five mar of the location, so we had units set up in alleyways, everything watching. And believe it or not, even during one part, the guy we were looking for had actually shone a light at one of the units, but I guess he didn't think anything of it. As we're sitting there, we see that subject go in the back alleyway, and we see brake lights come on from that point. We see the headlights coming down the alleyway where me and the marshal and the detective were stationed. The vehicle came right towards us, and then from there, we started to initiate to stop. Subject took off. It really was a well-speed pursuit. It went through the downtown area for just a short time. From there, we got on Broadway, from Broadway onto the interstate. At that time, we had three of our units there. We were already getting hold our state police to get involved in the pursuit with us, to assist us. About the time we were getting to the eighty-five area, that's when Sergeant Marine and Officer Zagorski were broken off to come back and protect the city. From there, we just continued, like I said, one of the slowest pursuits, but it's always good, because that's safer that way. From there, like she said, we got to about the one-twenty-nine. My chief even got into action, was giving out the verbal commands for it. The teamwork and communication between us, state police, US Marshals, it was excellent. I do want to say a special thank you to the officers involved, Officer Bromquist, Detective Lanford, Sergeant Marine, Officer Zagorski. We all came together, chief, we all came together, and it went smoothly.
Thank you. That is, that's wonderful. You guys, you guys are both a friend, you know, they should, I mean, that's great to hear, when we can do something as a team, we can come together as teamwork and without incident. I mean, like you said, there was small children in the vehicle. You weren't aware of that when the pursuit started.
No.
So again, it could have been, it could have been a devastating outcome, and it wasn't, and thank you, guys. Thank you. I mean, we just appreciate you all more than you know, and so we like to hear stories again. We hear all the negativity, but let's hear some positive, and I appreciate that. And Mike, great job for getting involved. I've been very excited.
Oh, yeah, it was. There was. And I just wanted to let you guys officially know, I'm sure everybody heard rumors and the manager's aware of it. I got a good crew. My coming back out of retirement was made easy because of, I got a great crew.
Yes, you did.
And I'm going to really miss them, but my last day of employment at this position is the twenty-third of April. And I had mentioned when I came back that I would do a year or two at the most, but I'm at that point, I'm ready to ride my Harley Davidson.
Congratulations, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the appreciation.
Appreciate it.
You'd think that chasing somebody would have gotten that blood and made you feel old.
No, that's great. That might have made you feel old.
That's great. That's great. Now I'm done.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Here's my final report. You guys already see in your little green folder here, the second quarter reports. These documents are the reports of expenditures, revenues, cash balances, and cash transfers for the second quarter, 2021. The quarterly reports are due to DFA the last day of the month following the end of the quarter. After the reports are uploaded and submitted to DFA, an analyst will review the report, submit a financial quarterly report analysis. The analysis for this quarter was received in the Finance Department on February fifth, 2021. It included Carol is here from Finance to answer any questions you may have at this time, or if the commission prefers, we're more than happy to add this item to next agenda, and you guys can discuss in more detail. That'll conclude my report.
Look, if you need, are there any questions from the claimants, other commissioners?
Madam Mayor, I was pleased with the report that a breakdown she gave two meetings ago. I think that's sufficient.
All right, yes.
It was very detailed.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's important that you're informed where we are with budget, so I plan on giving you a monthly budget report. Quarterlies we will also, you know, send to you. They don't have to be approved, the only one that has to be approved is the fourth quarter, but just to keep you informed.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Thank you. All right, let's move on to, let's go to Commissioner Baca. Do you have a report at this time?
I don't really have a report, but I was just going to ask Tracy to have somebody go down Marie Street, drive a golf course.
That's been taken care of.
I'll talk about that.
What was that?
Marie, Marie Golf Course, yeah.
Oh.
I'll remind them.
Got to go into my report then. I, I was scrolling Facebook, and I saw people kind of talking about them. I know it's been a while before, and I contacted Tracy, and thank you so much, Tracy, you got right on it, and you gave us an answer. I think it's, hopefully by Friday, we will have somebody out there cleaning up those weeds, so I hope that continues, and thank you so much for bringing these in, bringing those people in and giving us little update reports. I really appreciate. I, I really appreciate it. I like knowing what's going on. I think that, like she, she said, we hear all the bad all the time, and so to hear some of these good things is really, really nice. Um, also...
Just a second.
I was talking, remember?
Yes. Oh. I thought I was done.
She was talking, and then you got in there, so...
But go ahead.
Hold on, just a second. All right.
Finish, Paul.
I'm done, thank you, guys.
Attorney Rubin, did you have a report?
No, I was, I was saying something, you're fine, right?
Thank you.
Hi, Lance.
And, Mayor Protem?
Floris, are you up? I can't, I thought we were just going down the line here. Like that.
You sure I took them?
I look ready. Time of the clock. Ready, yeah. Okay, uh, we got, I don't know if everybody else got these in our email for the foster parents. Um, it's, I would encourage our, our families that can and would like to do this, just to get some more information for it to be resourced, families, um, but also, you know, known as foster families in contact, um, Kathy Melendez, her number's on these sheets. They're found all over town. Um, our kids need, need, uh, need us here, so... Other than that, I think that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Aragon, you have a report at this time?
Yes, I do, ma'am. Uh, regarding, uh, Rick Doeman at six thirty Charles, I remember that thing when I was chief, three years ago, uh, Tracy, I think it'd be really super if you could kind of keep a collaboration with him. You know, a re, a little re-contact goes a long way, so if you could keep the lines of communication open with him and keep him briefed, okay? All right. Number two, um, I've talked about it, and I hope I haven't worn you out, about the Veteran Service Officer, uh, thing. The city gave a, a resolution, Elephant Butte, Williamsburg, and the county, to get a, a VSO, Veteran Service Officer, to be here in our county and at least work our county and maybe Grant County. Right now, the one they have works five counties, which includes us and Grant. Well, it worked because, uh, I was notified yesterday, he was the, uh, guest speaker on the rotary, and in fact, I, I contacted Commissioner Luna, uh, by text message. He's willing to give a, uh, a, a media release. We do get, we do have that VSO coming here. They're going to hire somebody. You know, he or she will work Grant County and Sierra County, so we really, uh, it worked. All our support worked. The third thing, um, I'll, I'll just pass this out to, to my right. We have a lot of grants, we have a lot of projects, and Tracy, you're just magic on this stuff, and you're doing a great job. I would like to have, and of course, we've got to discuss it, a sheet, maybe a landscape, that has the projects and grants, the name of the project, how it's being funded, like, you know, by, uh, you know, Department of Finance, whatever, or, uh, Colonius, and narrative of, of a sentence or two on what it is. And then to the right of that, the cost and the match and the start date and the, just so at one glance, I could see it when we're talking about it, because we have a bunch of them. And I know you've got them up here in the mind, but you know, we're here with forty million things. It would be nice to, and, and keep, keep it updated. So, let's consider that, and if someone calls me, I can open up my book and say, "Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about." Okay. Number four, um, that's the listing, um, Mayor Protem hit it, hit it right on the head about the new manager, whoever it may be. I think, and, and she mentioned, uh, Mayor Protem mentioned about submitting information. You know, we have a lot of informal groups, and if they could put something together to send it to us, the mayor, and we'll use that. You know, we'll, we'll take that input. It's community governance, so I think it's important that we know what the community would like. So, with that, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Luna, do you have a report at this time?
Um, Tracy, thank you for the best manager's report I have seen since I've been sitting on this. That was fantastic. I think, uh, the mayor's comment about getting to hear all the great things, I think it made us all happy. I think we cannot not be proud to live in Tier C after today's manager's report, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, I am sad to hear of Mike's, uh, retirement. I, uh, I failed to forget, I failed to remember how, that I've been working full-time, uh, for twenty-four years, and I remember Mike when I first started doing influential parts for the legislature, and it's not fair that he gets to retire again, and I'm still working. I was, I was, but the point is, he's retiring, and I'm still working. Um, so anyways, I, I know those are going to be two truths to fill, and, um, I, I hope, because he has so much inherent knowledge, that maybe, uh, with the Commission's approval, we can advertise that position early and maybe have some cross-training going on, um, because the, the knowledge the man has is twenty-five plus years of just, he knows those things, and I think that, you know, you can't replace that without some cross-training. And so, I would like, I would like us to see, um, some advertisements for that sooner rather than later, um, so we can take advantage and tap that. Lastly, speaking of tapping that, um, knowledge, I saw Dave, um, Mr. Cook, Tim Cook, right? Mr. Cook from the Water Department, you retired?
Yes, yes. Dave, yeah.
Dave, thank you. I'm thinking Davey. Dave, Dave, um, over there with the guy yesterday at, um, off Hinton, looking at the paper plans, explaining to them, I mean, they have this big, uh, plan, and he's showing them, and obviously, you know, we're still utilizing his knowledge. And, and I think it's great that we have these paper maps. Um, I, I don't know if they're not digital somewhere. I, I don't, um, if we, like, it seems to me, like, I'm going to say Dropbox, but whatever format, we should have an app on a phone, we should be able to zoom and, like, stand over it. It's got to be more technologically savvy than that. I'm glad we have those maps, but heaven forbid, anything happens to Mr. Cook, I don't know what we're going to do, because it's my understanding, we use him all the time still, and, and I'm grateful he's willing to dedicate that time to the city after all the time he's already dedicated, but it just seems like we need to have another process for the day when Mr. Cook can't come to the site.
So, that's part of our water asset management plan?
Perfect. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I love it. Thank you.
And, um, all I, you know, of course, I gave my certificate of appreciation, and I appreciate these groups, and again, I like it when we can come and report, um, the different departments, when the department heads can come and report what they're doing, and, and so I appreciate that. Tracy, again, I'll echo, um, Commissioner Luna's, you know, this was a, a great report, a, a great manager's report, and, um, we can come together as a team, uh, we can work together as a team. I think the whole city is a great team, and we just need to stay on top of things and, and continue rolling forward. And, um, Cheryl?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm going to brag on Tracy because she won't, she already has a spreadsheet with every bit of this documentation that every question. Yes, she does, and it's great, and we work really closely on where the funding's come. Unlike the work wife, I always say, "How are you paying for this?" So, we work real well together, so I just wanted to brag on her and let you know it already exists.
Well, thank you, and that's always been my, my philosophy is, is that, you know, we planned that we want something, and how are we going to get there? You know, how are we going to get there in five years, ten years, however long it takes, and, and what resources are we going to use to pay for it? You know, we can't just pull money out of the air, and, and, uh, you know, again, Tracy always keeps very, very good records and spreadsheets. She keeps them going. I go in there all the time, and she's got it all, you know, I mean, it's fabulous. So, again, thank you, thank you to the whole team, and, um, keep up the good job. All right. At this time, uh, the next item on our agenda is an executive session, item J. We have, um, three items. J-one is, uh, committee, uh, committee strategic planning pursuant to ten fifteen one H-nine. J-two, threatened and pending litigation, that's current litigation pursuant to ten fifteen one eight-seven, and J-three, limited personnel matters pursuant to ten fifteen one H-two. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Commissioner Baca, make that motion.
Commissioner Forster, second.